All right, can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, May 28th. It's about 7:40. We just came from executive session where we discussed police negotiations. Before we get to our public hearing, I am going to take one resolution out of turn, if that's okay, because it'll be a quick one. So we're going to go straight to Resolution One, and I would say that we are without Trustee Heiser tonight, who was otherwise occupied. So we are going to go straight to Resolution Number One, please, Chris.
Okay. Considering the permanent appointment of a recreation supervisor, now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the offer of appointment dated May 17th, 2024, Kathy Latouris of 33 Hearthstone Road, Yonkers, New York, is hereby appointed, permanently appointed to the position of recreation supervisor with the village of Rybrook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York. And be it further resolved that the annual salary for this position is $80,001.98, with an effective start date of May 29th, 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
No move.
Second.
Well, I for one am just thrilled to be making this vote here to have a permanent appointment for Kathy. You've been just an absolute tremendous addition to the village staff, and what you've brought has been phenomenal. So we just want to say thank you for everything you've done for the village, and we're looking forward to you being here for a lot longer.
Yes, thank you. Great job.
Mayor, if I could just add, so again Kathy's been with us for two years and eight months. She just told me how many months earlier. And interesting enough, so she's also one of the, she is the first employee that we've hired permanently that was provisional, where New York State changes, you no longer have to serve the probationary term. You get credits for that. So automatically becomes permanent right from the start, which she's done just a great job for us. We're very lucky to have Kathy and her energy and her leadership. We really appreciate all that you do, day in and day out. So thank you.
I have to say that too. She's worked on a lot of my projects, and I'm so pleased and so happy to have you. Thank you so much. You make it so easy for us.
Yes, ditto. Thank you. You do a great job.
Any other comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes. Thank you. It's official. Oh, do you, you want a picture?
Yes.
You want a picture? Okay. Let's take a picture.
Go right ahead.
Let's get a picture.
Kathy deserves a picture.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. That way they'll put a poster tomorrow.
All right.
And people will know.
All right. Moving on, well, moving back, I guess, to public hearings. We do have a public hearing tonight for the draft EIS scoping outline. So I don't see a resolution, but...
Yeah, there's no resolution tonight.
So we just have, we probably, when do we open?
You should open the public hearing now. And then what happens is though, then you're going to go through the different comments that we've received.
Right.
And then there'll be no action tonight, other than the board can close the public hearing if you so desire. And then the next meeting, there would be a resolution finalizing the scoping document, because remember, comments are still accepted through the end of the week, or through the end of the month.
Right. All right, so can I have a motion second, please, to open the public hearing?
No move. Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, and I'll turn it over now to Representatives from 975 Anderson Hill Road.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, and good evening, members of the Board and staff. Brett Schwartz and Darren Smith are representing the applicant, joined by Diego and Paul from JMC Engineering. I should have expected that Chris was going to pretty much steal my opening remarks. So we are here tonight for a public scoping hearing. We're not going to do a full presentation as we have at prior meetings, but just to quickly recap for the Board and the public, the project consists of three main components. The first is a health and wellness lodge that will contain residential units, hotel rooms, a conference center, grand ballroom, and many other recreational amenities. The second is a residential building that will contain 75 units, including 12 affordable units, in accordance with the village's affordable housing requirements. And third is a separate medical wellness office building. So we're here for scoping under SECRE. SECRE is an acronym for the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And for those that may not know, a scoping document is essentially the table of contents for the draft environmental impact statement, or the DEIS. So it's about 24 pages, and it specifies a whole lot of technical information that our team needs to study and supply to the village. And it's going to be a pretty thick DEIS. And the topics range from stormwater and traffic, which I know are very important to the village and the community, as well as utilities, sustainability, visual, to the whole host of information that this document outlines that we're required to study. We've already received comments from the village planning board. I see a few of them are here this evening, as well as the village attorneys and engineer and planning consultants. The city of Rye has supplied some comments, as well as just this afternoon, county planning. So we're appreciative of all the comments that we've received to date, and look forward to hearing what the public has to say this evening, as well as from your board.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just tag on to that.
Please, Chris.
And just for the members of the public, just remember, we always put everything on our website. So if you go to projects on our website, you'll see developments, development projects. You go there and you'll see 975 Anderson Hill Road. And all the documents we talked about, from the scoping documents to all the comments that get received, all get put onto that website. And then what we try to do for the agenda, on the topic that's on the agenda, we'll also publish them on our agenda as well, for anything that's related, for instance, like tonight, to the scoping document. So, you know, we try to be very transparent. It's in two places right now. The items for tonight, as well as the items for tonight and all the other documents on the other section of our website.
Great, thank you, Chris. And I want to just start by saying thank you to the members of the planning board, to members of the consultants and legal consultants as well for the village, just for, you know, taking a thorough look at this, providing those comments. I certainly, you know, as I read through the various comments that we had received from the boards and the consultants, certainly it was a lot of similar things to what I was thinking when I initially saw them. And, you know, really looking at different aspects of what was and wasn't being covered and what needed to be. I know we did receive the county comments just today. So we also appreciated, are appreciative of the county planning board or planning department for making those comments. Certainly some things that I had, I mean, I wondered about the airport, but they certainly put it in writing about it. Personally, I was also very happy to see the traffic studies extending beyond the immediate area, looking down towards King Street. And the reminder that when you're looking at King Street and Anderson Hill, that is not in Rybrook. That's actually outside of our jurisdiction. But still something that affects the residents of Rybrook, and that might get affected by this project, or will get affected most likely. And, you know, I'm just, I'm, well, I'm going to open it up to public comment in a second. But one thing that I would just reiterate, that was, that was stated, I believe either in the introduction or one of the comments, is to refrain from "we" or "us." And, you know, that it's, that this is, this will become the village's document eventually. That this becomes, you know, what the village is looking for and what we want in it. So this is, you know, I think we've read, we've read EIS reports in the past that, you know, tend to state opinion. And what we're looking for in this are really just the facts of what we're looking for. So I guess I would open this up to public comment. And then we'll come back to board comment?
Yeah, sounds like a point.
Sound good? So is there anyone from the public who would make, like to make comment on the scoping document? Please. And I would ask just anyone coming up to make comment, just state your name and address, and speak clearly into the microphone so people at home can hear as well.
Or watching after it's been recorded.
Tanya Vernon, from Forley Lane, lifetime resident of Rybrook. And I'm not a public speaker, so I am moved to come and speak about this project. Asking, I don't know what the other comments are, but, and you mentioned about traffic. That's one of the primary concerns that I have. Being born and raised here in this village, that I was thinking about this in terms of urban sprawl, right? We have, I made a connection, sort of like the dawn, if you allow me just a moment to express a thought, that when the dawn comes in, we don't notice it, but suddenly it's there. And that's a little bit like this kind of traffic situation we've all experienced, increase of traffic in our whole area, our whole neighborhood. How long we wait for the light to change, the weaving in and out, the jostling of cars. And it's just something that I really request the board, and I know you'll study it in detail. But, and I'm not sure how that gets studied, in terms of, you know, measurements. But it's just something as a resident that I have really felt over time. And the other point was I'd like to make is, and I apologize if this is not the forum for this. There was a gentleman who spoke at the earliest meeting. I think he was a board member, and I was moved by his reaction regarding community integration, I'll call it. He actually said, "give back," right, which is not very attractive term. It sounds kind of selfish. But I just wanted to pose something to the board about thinking outside of the box in terms of community integration. When I was young, we had the Hilton that was developed. And one of the interesting things that came out of that was not only integration in terms of pool. The pool usage was expanded to the community. They gave lessons to myself. I was one of the individuals who benefited from this hotel that was built. The other thing that was developed, was, which was negotiated, was a green space around the hotel. They had, the Hilton, when it was built, had to leave a certain amount of green space. The gentleman who spoke actually meant, mentioned, is it possible to have walking open to the public? We have very little walking areas. We have Crawford Park, which is delightful. You can see how it's being used from all neighborhoods. But I just want to mention that, and have the board please think about ways that, and this is an opportunity, ways that the community can benefit. The hotel in the picture, the Westmore News, and I understand that only 40% of Rybrook people get the Westmore News, but you see the hotel and the size and height. I understand that Arrowood seems to be pleased with it. But the footprint is, I would imagine, bigger. The hotel, amount of hotel rooms. So I don't have that data in front of me, but why does, why do things always have to be bigger? I know there's revenue issues. I know that, you know, it's benefits, benefits the builders to have a larger scale. But I just wanted to mention that. So it's a plea from one resident, and perhaps speaking for others. And those are my two main concerns, traffic and community integration. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would mention that in the, in some of the comments in the scoping document, certainly there are going to be traffic studies done, and in a lot of different places. And it's also brought up about the parkland or the fee in lieu of parkland, that that's also part of this.
Yeah, and on the traffic, it's current traffic conditions, as well as I believe, I remember seeing comments on, like, future development conditions, like the senior development of Purchase College, for instance. Making sure like, that's an approved development, making sure that gets factored into anything that's reviewed.
Right, and also compare, not just comparing Doral as it is now, but as it was, when it was open. Which I also saw in the comments. And I would just mention, and I should have mentioned this at the beginning, you know, really what we're not, we're not really looking, you know, basing the development on its merits tonight. What we're looking at is the scoping document for the EIS, to make sure everything's in there, that we would want to make sure is studied. That's really the intent of tonight. There will be a lot of debate on the merit of the development in the future, once this is complete. And that will be in front of this board, planning board, zoning, probably not zoning, but ARB will have it. So it'll be, it'll be in front of a bunch of different boards. So I think there was someone else from the public who wanted to comment, please.
Hi, I'm Rachel Begun, and this is Darren Smith. We are residents of Kingfield. Do you need our exact address? Oh, okay. So as you know, or you may or may not know, Kingfield abuts right up to the property line of 975 Anderson Hill property line. We are looking forward to this development. We think it would be great for the community, but we do have some concerns. We are literally living right at the borderline. So we wanted to just make sure that, you know, our quality of life that we expected when we first moved into our home, you know, that that will be maintained, and that Kingfield's interests will be kept in mind during, you know, throughout this whole process. And I'm not sure if what we're mentioning tonight is actually covered under what we're supposed to be talking about tonight. If it's not, and we need to come back, just let us know. But there were just three things we wanted to kind of mention. It seems that the new building is significantly closer to the Kingfield property line than the current building or the past building was. And this concerns us. It is much further, it's just closer in both ways, further down, further closer to us in the property line. So that's a little bit of a concern, especially because it is a bigger building, and it seems like it's going to be a much taller building. The second point is that the image that was shared in the plans, and that was also shared in the last meeting in April, it shows a view from Kingfield, where it's like all full of trees, and that you barely can see the property, and that's not really accurate, because those trees are not evergreens. We literally live right there. You can see straight through to the, like, a large portion of the Doral property line, or property, you know, six months of the year, when there are no, there's no leaves on the trees. So that was not an accurate representation. And it's a pretty significant view that you can see when there are no trees there. So what we're asking for is there, if there could be a buffer of evergreens, so that, you know, that view is, you know, a little bit obstructed from trees, and there's not that straight-through view that we currently see when there's no foliage on the trees. And then lastly, because there are, events are going to be there, you know, they talked about it being a conference center and an event center. We were pretty sure that there are going to be bands and DJs when there are weddings, and, you know, other types of similar events, and we're concerned about the noise. And we're hoping that there can be a noise ordinance put into place, pretty much every day of the week. Obviously, the timing would probably be different during the week than during the weekends. But we just feel that, you know, local residents should never be compromised on feeling that they can't fall asleep because there's too much noise, and the burden really shouldn't be put on us to have to call the police for, to make a complaint or something like that. And we just want to say this all upfront, so that, you know, it's not an after-the-fact issue. And I think that's it, just those are the ideas.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. And I would say to some of your comments, in one of the comments we received, and I forget which one, but it was talking about leaf-off pictures. So we would want to make sure that the leaf-off pictures are part of the aesthetics. I think it's the, what is it, the, I was just on it too. The Visual Resources and Community Character, I think, section would cover that. Now, we definitely want to make sure that there are the leaf-off pictures. And I didn't see anything about the balloon testing, but I'm assuming that would be done as well, that we would want balloon testing done as part of that, so that we're able to see the sightlines, and, you know, not just necessarily from ground level, potentially also from windows.
You mean balloon, balloon meaning like drone also, or balloon because you want to see where the window is?
No, where they, where they fly the balloon, the height of what the, basically the approximate locations, and the height of where the sightlines will be, so that you can see.
Got it, thank you.
And regarding the noise, Rybrook does have a noise ordinance.
Okay.
So there is one already in effect. It's my understanding that probably the majority of any of the larger events would be in the ballroom, which is actually subgrade from the front in the proposed plan. But I'm sure, I mean, we'll also be talking about, in the EIS, not only will talk about noise once it's built out, but noise during construction as well.
Okay.
I think there's a pool, so there'll be noise, obviously, outside of the pool. So I think, I think the timing, like, what the hours of the pool would be, would be, and all of that too.
And again, just to be clear, so think of this as like a table of contents for the studies. So it's good to hear what, some of the issues and concerns that the neighbors have. And we want, what the village board is trying to do is make sure all the areas of concern that need to be studied are addressed in that study that they're going to do, called an environmental impact statement. So that's the process. You're right, right at the beginning stages. So there will be a lot of times to come back.
Okay, great.
So, but it will take a little time to prepare the EIS. They're very thick documents and big documents. So that takes a lot of studies, outside consultants that are brought in, and reviewed on the village's side as well. So we also have our own consultants that will review what they prepare. So just realize all of that, and there'll be a lot of public input throughout the process. So it's good to hear the concerns upfront. I think it's good for the applicant to hear that. But also, it's a good opportunity now for us, for the board to hear that concerns. Ultimately, there'll be this final table of contents, called the scoping document, that'll be finalized, and that's what the development, developer will now go off and study all those areas. So that's the process.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public? All right, so I'm going to open it up to board comment, please. And, or Chris, is there anything you want to say first?
Sarah, do you have anything you want to just highlight that were major areas? So without, you know, certainly you don't need to go through your entire memo, but is there any major areas you want to highlight that you want to make sure gets addressed?
And I think this is more for public.
Yep.
You know, so the public's aware of it, because the documents have been submitted, so...
Yep, and are online.
I will give you the summary of our comments that really pertain to what has been brought up by the public.
Or other things that you just find, I mean, I think, anything you think is of importance.
Yes, our traffic engineers did review the scoping document. And while it was very thorough, we have recommended a few additional intersections to be studied, including the Anderson Hill Road and Purchase College driveway. We've also asked for there to be like a worst-case scenario event for the ballrooms, if all the ballrooms were occupied at the same time for an event. We would like to see the traffic generated by that. That is one that we feel is very important. Also, the site distance analysis for the new driveway, we want to make sure that that's placed correctly. One of the other things that we touched on was the creation of the new steep slopes. We know that in taking out the existing golf course, there are some actual man-made steep slopes that will be flattened, but we want a quantification of what is exactly happening there. Also, the photos of the off-site vantage points with leaf-on and leaf-off conditions. And then an analysis of post-development noise and lighting. I think those are the big highlights.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And I guess I could ask Ralph if there's anything that you wanted to highlight from the Kenan Bean memo?
Yeah, so the one thing that I would highlight is the proposed document should clarify what it means to study the existing conditions, existing buildings, and existing development, given that the Doral-Arwood building is currently in the process of being demolished. So we want to make sure that there's a common understanding of what's being referred to by those terms and what the comparison is.
Right. All right, and I'm going to open this up to board comment as well. You know, I think, you know, most of my comments, when we get to me eventually, I don't think anyone here is going to be surprised, anyone who knows me is going to be surprised, that they probably have mostly to do with stormwater. So, which happens to be a topic near and dear to my heart, and something that I find extremely important. And I was, we did see comments from the city of Rye referencing the study done by Ramble, and trying to make sure that some of the issues there could potentially be addressed, and making sure that the studies that have already existed that show the conditions can be used as part of this.
And on top of that, I thought it was very interesting, one of the comments that came in regarding the interplay of the lake as a stormwater retention as also being an amenity to overlook. So how that interplay works and how that's managed, I think that'll be, that'll be a very interesting topic as well.
Yeah, I fully agree with that. It's going to be an interesting topic of how it's able to hold large amounts of water in a rain event. So it's going to have to fill some, but yet it's expected to be at a certain level for the amenities. So that's, it's kind of, it's going to be interesting to see that dual purpose, and how that plays out, because it will be very important that it's able to function as it's intended to, as a stormwater retention basin. All right, so do we want to just start down?
Down me?
Yes, I'll go first.
Okay, thank you. I did read through all the comments, and one I was very happy to see was one from the county that pointed out sidewalks and using, thinking about the existing conditions and how sidewalks or bike paths can be utilized going all the way down, I guess, from King Street and then going up to SUNY Purchase. I do know SUNY Purchase has a retirement facility there now, senior living. That road is very narrow. I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the entrance and exit out of the facility. Of course, all these questions and all these comments that are coming in and from the public, I can say that they're all valid. They talk about stormwater, they talk about wildlife, they talk about county sewer impacts. I think all this information is crucial. And if there's any more information that the public can bring forward, by all means, bring it forward. They even talk about the bus system and how that's going to work. I think there's a bus stop in front of that, in front of Arrowood now. So this is going to be a long process. I know we're, this is part of it, which will end in a couple of weeks, I guess, right? This is the scoping, and then it's going to, and then from that, hopefully, we'll get some, between now and when we vote, we'll get some more input. And that's about it. I think it's a lot of work, a lot of reviewing, and a lot of reading, I must say. I enjoy reading a lot of the, a lot of the question, input that came out.
Oh, you think this was a lot of, oh, you wait? Oh, you think this was a lot of, oh, you wait? We have a lot of reading ahead of us in the future.
Yes, we do. So I also read all of the comments, and everybody covered tremendous amounts, and I'll let you go through, you all right?
Yeah, I'm okay.
A lot of it. But Sarah just mentioned that she would like to see a study done when the ballroom is full. Well, I would also tell you that they have to be mindful of the fact that there should be, the ballroom is a separate entity and not necessarily associated with the hotel as per what Mr. Cohen said. He wants it to be, you know, a huge space to have weddings, et cetera. So it has to be along with full occupancy of a hotel and full occupancy of all of the living facilities. So it's not just the ballroom being full. It is a separate amount of cars. So there's a lot of different versions of that study. I would also say that traffic will be coming also from Anderson Hill Road because there's a way to get to that entrance using that way. And I agree with you that if sidewalks were there, it would promote a safer way of getting there. It's a very narrow winding road and it is a concern to me. And a bike path would be awesome. Also, quite frankly, I'd like to see alternative designs that reduce the overall, all, overall height. I am concerned about that. Our neighbors that just bought their houses at King Field, this is backloaded on this property, what you just designed, and they get to see everything. And I have not walked that end of the property, but I'm sure that that is hard for them because as you enter, that's where you place all the low buildings, but you push the hotel to the back, which is where all of those houses are. So yes, I'd like to see that. I think that's really important, and if you could spread it out a different way, perhaps that might be a better way. Also, I agree with the comments that others have stated that I'm very wary of the water issues our village has, and there was no mention of the flood plains in any of the data, or very little. And there is, I did look at the FEMA map, and there is a flood zone there on the back part of the property. And so it will be interesting how you deal with that. You already brought that up, so I'll leave that to our expert on water and flood plains. I'm going to send it down until I find the rest of my notes, if that's okay. I do have more.
Yeah, I guess, I guess for me also, I'm concerned with water runoff and the amount of impermeable surface that I will definitely look for in your document, and I feel like that's a big concern of our village. And also, you know, maintaining just like a clean, natural environment, you know, just watching the pesticides and the fertilizers and things like that is of a concern. We pride ourselves on being a sustainable community, and we'd love for you guys to participate in that as well, obviously. So, and then I guess my other question, which I don't know if this is the right time for it, Chris, is like regarding the low-income properties, how do we make sure like all the materials that are used for the other properties are used for these also? Like is that not at this time?
It's early, but it, I think you're making a good point. You just want to make sure it's clear upfront that, you know, you expect that the quality and the locations and everything is fully compatible with the other, rest of the design.
Okay. Yeah, that, okay. That's it, thank you.
Find more notes?
Um, I did, yes. The, you, the Joffe Rockfield Engineering also brought up the presence of flood plains, which I already discussed, but during a discussion, there was a discharging of water when it hits a certain level. So I would like to better understand how that's going to work. I know that that's part of this. But I also saw that you are concerned with the property itself, but I am concerned with how it affects Rybrook and all of the neighbors. Because water is one of those issues. It moves, and it moves down, and it affects the entire neighborhood, and we have to be mindful of that, and I think that you do also. It's not just where the water goes and where you displace it when you're building, but what you're going to do and how it's going to be dealt with, and how it's, hopefully will not affect any of the neighbors. Because we have, we have a lot more severe storms now. It's no longer that 100-year storm. Quite frankly, we're getting those 100-year storms much more frequently. So I think that the data is not necessarily what you can rely on, and we're going to push you on that, okay?
Diego and I try to listen every community we go to across the county, so we certainly expect.
Just to briefly respond, because stormwater, we, we get it. We know it's a key topic. Diego and I hear that in every community we go to across the county. The scope already identifies compliance with the village's own stormwater regs as well as the New York State DEC Stormwater Design Manual. So while the scope doesn't spell out all the intricacies of what's required, trust us, there's a lot of information. We know what these guys need to study in the SWIP, and ensuring no impacts to off-site neighbors is critical. So we get it, we appreciate the comments, we're, we're on it.
Okay. All right. Let's go. Go ahead if you want.
Sure, no, I didn't know if you're.
No, I, I have 20 pages of stuffs. Go ahead.
Okay.
Jason, someone brought up the, the way they presented the plan, how they showed the views. And I think that's a very important topic because that's really deceiving. If you see something and it's not true to what it's supposed to be, like you said, no leaves on the trees.
Yeah.
See what it looks like in the winter.
Right.
Take a view from another point, maybe from King Field or from, you know, really.
And I would, and I, along those same lines, I would suggest not inserting artificial trees into the pictures as I've also seen in some previous EISs. Speaking of previous EISs, I think some of the draft of this scoping document came from a previous one. I was a little confused, I guess, about the, the mention of timing of construction and coordinating with the school regarding impacts, considering this is pretty far from it.
The school.
So I think that was, let me find the page, but it may want, may want to be removed. Where is the page? On page 22, the top of page 22, where it talked.
There's good cash in it, that wasn't inadvertent.
I did, it was, you know, and I figured, and I, I know where that's coming from, and I don't think we have the same concerns, because this construction will not be taking place right next to the school.
Right, so you're going to cover the water, right, and how?
A little bit, why don't you make your comments? If I have the same comments, I won't say them.
So in the, at one meeting, Mr. Cohen brought up seasonal variation, the pond going up and down. So how will that work? And there is a lot of data in there. It's a lodge versus a hotel. Is there a reason why we're calling it a lodge versus a hotel, or is that just a way we're reimagining what it's going to look like? There's no, like, nothing nefarious about the way we're calling it a lodge?
Nothing nefarious. It's certainly a reimagining and a re-envisioning of the site, and a lodge is more comprehensive, it's global, because within the lodge is hotel, is residential, is the ballroom, the conference center, and all the amenities. So we've, Mr. Cohen used lodge, and the health and wellness lodge as sort of the umbrella term for all those other elements that are within, within the use.
So it's really one and the same, we're just calling it a lodge because of the design?
Yes.
Great, okay.
And then the mix of uses that go within the lodge.
Mm-hmm, okay. Lighting, there was no data on lighting, but we are, like, because there's a lot of rules with uplighting because you're near the airport.
I think, again, that is something that will be included, that was commented, there was a couple of comment letters that touched on a comprehensive lighting plan being prepared, and that'll be included in the document. And again, following all the rules, dark sky compliance, fixtures, lighting, et cetera, et cetera. So as part of the DEIS, again, we'll include a detailed lighting design for the overall property.
Okay.
And I would include, include in that maybe mitigating against, you know, wildlife effects as well, that we're looking at it from the human aspect as well as outside of that.
So I would imagine that you're going to discuss how they can make it greener?
That was in some of the comments, there was some, I did, it didn't go as far as to say looking at LEED certification, because that's a very specific certification, but it did talk about, and I forget what the wording they used was, but looking at energy efficiency, looking at redesign, I mean, there was, and I'm trying to remember which comment.
The county made some comments.
I know there were a lot of different comments.
I think it was in the county one.
So it might be good just to touch on this quickly, and the, the green design and the sustainable design features. I think we neglected to mention at the beginning here, we did have a meeting with your planning board. I know members of the planning board are here this evening as well. They provided a letter, which I think touched on some of the topics that you were talking about. We spent a lot of time with your board, with the planning board, speaking about stormwater concerns, flooding concerns, specifically the Ramble report, and incorporating that into our document to look at the improvements that were suggested in that document and how they could be incorporated into this design. So those are things that are being folded into the scoping document as well. So I think based on all the comments that we've heard to date, you know, we know stormwater is going to be an extremely hot topic that we need to discuss and cover very, very thoroughly, but we also wanted to make sure it was clear what the scope was, and we're going to list all those individual things that we're going to include as part of that document, based on our discussions with the planning board, your board here, and then also staff. Regarding the green design, chairman had an interesting comment at that meeting last time where it's incorporated into it. You know, this is a sustainable design. Mr. Cohen already at the last couple of meetings, LEED certification is on the table, he's already made it public, and, you know, he does anticipate going for a LEED certification, actually going through the commissioning process. And then there's another alternative that was suggested by the planning board, which was looking at things above and beyond what your code permits, reducing parking with, space with, reducing drive aisles, something that deviates from the code, and that was something we wanted to discuss with staff on how that could be incorporated into the document as well. So we are looking at those things, and there were a couple of comments that are being incorporated into the design.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we verbalized it here as well.
Exactly, that's why I just wanted to spend two minutes.
I appreciate that.
And as, and.
A lot of focus on those two items.
And as you have two former chairs of the Sustainability Committee sitting here, we did like the term "super green."
Super green.
From, from the planning board.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that one before. We all heard it in the studio.
Also, if somebody can expand on the residential units and how that will impact Rybrook versus more hotel rooms, because Arrowood had more hotel rooms and.
No residential.
No, had more hotels.
Yeah, more hotel, yeah.
And this is now going to be more, you know, people living there.
Yeah, right.
And how that affects our water and roadways, et cetera. So it's a huge residential. I mean, do they know if it's going to be condos, rentals? What are they, what is the intent?
Still to be determined at this point.
And, and I also see that you thought about breaking up the parcels. Is it always going to be owned? Are you breaking it up just for mortgages, or are you?
Again, the intention for that is transactional purposes, mortgages, you know, the ownership of the different.
But it can be sold separately?
But it's looked at as a planned unit of our PUD, it's going to be looked at as one comprehensive design.
But can it be sold separately?
Theoretically, yes. It could be under separate ownership, but it's still subject to all the regulations that are going to be put in place as part of the approval process. There's, you know, going to be cross-access easements, cross-parking easements, open space, all of that. It's still going to be one design, but for transactional purposes, may be owned individually, yes.
And I would mention, right now, there are multiple lots on that property as well.
Yeah, there are several lots now.
Right.
It's just rejiggering those lots so that it's around the office building, the residential building, and then the lodge.
So it's really an apartment building that you're building there?
Well, it's to be determined whether or not it's for sale or for rental is, is going to dictate what that is. Again. The second use that I mentioned, that standalone residential building.
You're going to have to, other people want to hear.
The standalone residential building will be its own residential building, again, the 75 with the 12 affordable. And so the PUD regulations contemplate what's called a PUD subdivision, so there might be subdivision around each of the three main components of the project, again, the lodge, the residential building, and the medical wellness office building.
Right, so I guess as part of the scoping documents, how will that work if they sell it off into, to different people?
Absolutely. I think, well, again, the regulations allow and contemplate for a subdivision of the property, and so if there, if there is a subdivision proposed, that would be folded as part of the application process. The subdivision itself wouldn't result in impacts, the subdivision is a line drawing exercise to implement the project.
Question, there was a cell tower there at one time. Were you guys planning on the cell tower? There was a Verizon tower there, and then there was a temporary one there.
It's still there now.
And it's still there now. What is going, what's the status with that? Will that be?
We're going to, I'm going to have to get back to you. I know that was a topic of discussion, Mr. Cohen, David Vogel also, who was here at the last meeting, they were addressing that. I just don't have a specific answer for you. I think we need to get back to you on what's.
Yeah, I thought the temporary one was removed.
I don't, I don't know.
Pretty sure the temporary one was removed.
I don't want to say one way or the other, just because I don't.
Cow was gone?
Yes.
Cow was gone?
Cow's gone.
Pretty sure it is, yeah.
I want my services to be normal.
Sell on wheels is a cow. Okay.
While we're, while we're up here responding to some of these comments, I just wanted to mention, because it's come up a couple of times, the off-leef conditions. So that's on page 13 in the scope, it's already in the document, and, and we were careful this past winter to already go out to the site and take pictures, right, in the off-leef condition, again, anticipating this being a common question. So in the DEIS, even though we may be submitting it later this summer, early fall, we're going to have those off-leef pictures already having been taken and incorporated into the document.
Great, thank you so much. I guess there's one other thing I want to make sure, because we did this with 900 King, and that is when you do the traffic studies, please be mindful not to do it during school breaks, nor during the summer. I mean, if you have to do it during the summer, I understand that, but that is a very big issue. Do not do it on a testing day either.
Yes, no, that's understood. Oh, like, yes, that's a specific requirements within the document. We look at full occupation, full, you usually even do the middle of the week, because now Mondays and Fridays are not generally good days to count. You want to do a Wednesday because the middle of the week tends to be a busier day.
Everybody sleeps home.
Weekday, so.
So I want to be mindful of our errors in the past.
Yes.
We don't want you to have to redo it.
Yep.
The other thing is demand, family demand, since this is going to be a residential development and also not age, age restricted. So our village is highly sought after, the schools are exemplary, and we are always concerned with the number of children that can come in, and while they may not be of school age immediately, it is certainly a concern to us, and we like to help the school out with anticipating bus needs, et cetera, going forward.
Yeah.
Because it's large units, right? How many, right?
Section 10.3 specifically gets into the school district and calculations for that, so definitely in the scope.
Great.
Their comments?
I'm looking, go ahead.
Okay. One of, one of my comments was just when looking at recycling and garbage, maybe look at composting as well, since it's something that we do in the village. You know, the, the Ramble study has been mentioned, you know, it'll be integrated into there, possibly other, and under mitigating factors in there, or maybe also look at alternative methods, rain gardens, cisterns, the like. I only mention that because I have both at my house.
It's something, I'm sorry, just, I got to chime in again, green practices, stormwater, again, Brad said, we, we hit on this on virtually every project now, it's such a hot topic in every municipality.
It is.
But green practices is one of the things that we have to look at and evaluate at the beginning of the analysis, and look at all of the practices that are given to us from the DEC manual, and rain gardens, cisterns, planters, all of those things get evaluated. Open space is a big one, too, quite frankly, just maintaining and converting back to open space as opposed to what it is right now, you know, restoring it to more of a natural condition are all good things that we're incorporating into the plan, so we'll have a full analysis on that as well.
Can I jump in for a second?
Please.
I know that, I read. I know that, I read some of the documents once and then I revisited it over the weekends, and I'm not sure, the height is either 86 or 96 at its highest point. Can you clarify that for me?
It's 96 feet measured from the zone, that's the zoning calculation, so that's the average grade around the perimeter of the building.
Right, and that is higher than we permit?
Correct, it's higher than what's.
And how much is permissible?
It's 40. It's 40 or 50 feet.
That's a very big variance.
It is, and again, since day one, we came in with identifying that as what the height is, and we're providing some additional information on how that height is relative to the existing building that's there. And then the other thing that was included in the planning board's analysis is reduced height alternative as well, so that'll be included in the scope.
I concur, yes. Okay, because I found two different data points on that.
Yeah.
And I wasn't sure if it was because of a chimney or mechanicals.
Just to clarify, it is because of the lobby area. So the lobby area, Mr. Cohen had alluded to a number of different times, the presence of the lobby area and the design and the focal point. That's where the highest point occurs and then it tapers off from there. But again, it is 96.
The lobby is seven stories large?
It's that vaulted entrance that we shared in the presentation, correct? There is a significant lobby space there.
I know, no, I didn't realize it was seven stories. Wow.
Yeah.
It is.
So it's only in that lobby point?
That's the highest point, and then it starts to taper off from there as you extend down the wings.
About 96, that's huge, okay.
No, I think of the airport and I think of the wellness center, I'm thinking, how quiet is that going to be to be relaxing even outside? I just, it's amazing that the type of facility you're going to have there and the noise from the airplanes, you know, that just seems very, but you guys must have did your math.
Well, Mr. Cohen will speak to a lot of that. There is other residential properties in the area close by.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
It is, it's common, it's not uncommon to develop near the airport, Kingsfield, just constructed right next door, has the same airport.
Some noise reduction windows and light fixtures.
Deal with here, too. There's different ways to mitigate that.
I'm assuming now, just touching on utilities real quick, at what point during this process, Chris, because I know it's that, I forget, the intent to serve, you know, the.
Will serve, the ability to serve?
Yeah.
For the water company they're talking about. And that whole, yeah, the willingness to serve, but also more than that, you really need to look, because you're right at the point of interconnect, and this will be studied, I know, but you're at the point of the interconnect with Westchester Joint and the Viola system. So, you know, there's different, you got to make sure that not just the letter says willingness to serve, but is there any upgrade that's needed to part of the system that was also studied as part of the Kingfield development as well? And there was, it was at one point on a tipping point, plus, you know, Portchester's going through some of that right now as well with the development that's proposed and what type of improvements may or may not be needed to that system. And there are significant ones for what they're anticipating doing within the village of Portchester. So looking at that issue, seeing how that interconnect, making sure it can serve the property without improvements, or if improvements are necessary, how they're going to be paid for or funded, all those issues just need to be looked at.
Yeah, and the moratorium's lifted, correct? That's what I thought.
And also taking consideration 900 King Street, a development that may be coming up with the infrastructure of sewer and water supply in the calculations, and they probably have to figure that.
The senior development, the senior development that's being built.
At Purchase College.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how the water serves.
I don't know where they're getting their water from.
Purchase and are over here, yeah.
And what is the total square footage developments that you're proposing?
Total square footage of all the buildings?
Uh huh.
Test me here, hang on one second.
Versus that of Arrowood?
That I don't have the comparison. I can look up right now. I know I have the information on the square footages for the proposed building. I have the breakdown of it, I just have to.
Well, I can add it if you have it.
Pick up the number real quick.
It's kind of deceptive with so many structures. I mean, not deceptive in a bad way, it's just that I couldn't figure it out.
We have it broken down, it's broken down two ways, by square footage and by units.
Yeah, it's not units that I'm interested in.
Understood, you're looking for the total square footage of all the buildings combined.
Exactly.
And I will get that for you, just give me a few minutes if you want to go on to your next one.
Sure, sure, I appreciate it. Because I want to have a, you know, while you're taking away open green space, you're really building up this development. So I want to have a gauge as to how big it is versus what was there.
And that goes back to the point earlier about the existing condition and studying the comparables there, so the comparable analysis will be in the document.
Great, okay. Don't have to get it right now, but I think it would be helpful.
If I could just add on about the, going backwards for a second with the water?
Yeah.
Just be aware, the Public Service Commission was just making a final, approving a final settlement with Viola on the water rates, but it also included an apportionment from developers, developers versus the water rate payers to, on how any improvements would be funded. So just be aware that that apportionment would likely be used by the Public Service Commission as well as a precedent on how that should be distributed. So just be aware of that. You may want to look at the recent rate cases, which I think was just resolved last week.
Chris, is there anything you think we've missed?
Not that I can think of. I've given my comments as well, which were incorporated into our consultant's document.
So all these comments are going to be laid out and presented?
And there has to be a revised scope that'll be prepared.
Yeah.
The question is the timing of that revised scope.
Yeah, that is a question that I was going to raise, so at least we know when to put it on our.
When to put it on the agenda, when we should be putting us on for accepting the document.
So working backwards, we're certainly aiming for your June 25th meeting. We're going to take the next week or two to take all the comments from everyone, working into an updated draft scope and work with Chris and staff and Ralph to get a revised and updated document ready for your review. And we'll submit a red line copy and a clean copy so you can see what the changes are, and we'll make it as easy as possible for you to review and digest those changes.
Right, and again, just to reiterate for the public and anyone watching at home, that we're not expecting to have answers to these questions at this point. That it's just making sure that all of these questions.
Are addressed.
Are covered.
End up in the scoping document so that they can then be addressed in the EIS.
You want to ask Chris if he has any other questions?
And at that point, you guys will probably be gone for several months working on those documents, is that correct?
That's correct.
So once the scoping document is finalized, and again, as the mayor said before, that's the village's document. We define, the village board defines what's to be covered in the DEIS. And then the applicant, once that's defined, will be going through all the studies and addressing it. You're not going to hear the project for many, many months, and don't mean it's not active, it means they've got a lot of work to do to answer the issues that, concerns or anything that's addressed in the scoping document.
And just so you all know also, while we're undertaking these studies and working on the DEIS, and I'm glad folks from Kingfield are here tonight, we're also conducting our public outreach simultaneous with preparation of the SEAKER documentation. We met with SUNY Purchase last week, we're meeting with the Blind Brook Country Club this week. We are correspondent with the Kingfield Board about setting up a date with them as well. Discussions are ongoing with the Doral Greens HOA, so the SEAKER is a path and our public outreach is another path that we're pursuing right now.
Great, okay. Also, what I didn't bring up, and I know it's in the documentation, but I want the public to be aware of it, is the effect that it will have on EMS, police, fire. I know it's in there.
It's in there, yeah.
The questions were in there, but I want to make sure that that is verbalized, because when you have a huge, you know, 500-person wedding, et cetera, God forbid something happens, EMS, fire, all those people are going to be affected. And police also for crowd control, should you need it for any reason, God forbid. And I do note that you're going to be using heavy timber. Is that something that's more flammable?
Well, it definitely has to meet the requirements.
I know it has to meet the requirements, but that is, you know, it just hit me as a, something that I should at least phrase as an issue.
Well, again, I'm not going to comment too much on the architectural features of it. I'll leave that to the architect and we'll certainly address that. But we'll address construction type, construction classification, how it's done from a fire rating standpoint, and then the difference between the construction of the building and the finishes, too. There's, you know, a combination of the two things, just because there's a lot of timber that's being used. There might be steel structure, but then there's wood finishes. But I'll let the architect deal with that, and that is certainly something that will be in the DEIS.
Great, thank you, but it's also for, well, we read it all.
Yeah.
The public is not necessarily aware of it, so I thought that bringing it up might be a good idea. So I'll throw it back to you, is there anything we haven't asked? But you're expected.
We got it, and no false trees, I heard that as well.
I remember seeing that, one of the previous ones, and where it was the view, and I'm not going to specify, I can tell you exactly what picture it was, but I'll say it offline. But it was a view of the proposed development with trees and then clearly just, you know, drawn trees. Oh, look.
We don't have many palm trees in the area, is that what it was?
No, all right. And also, we would very much love you to leave as many trees as possible and do your best to save them. I know that you did not go through the whole thing yet, and the plan, it said you did not do any kind of tree schedule.
Again, another thing, we will provide that information, and preservation, especially of the existing buffers, was critical to the design, too, around the perimeter of the property, all those areas, between Doral Greens and the existing parking lot. All of those were already earmarked and flagged as part of the development plan for preservation. So we are definitely looking at that and keeping that.
Great.
Under consideration for sure.
Okay. Right, the ponds, there's, somebody brought up the ponds on Route 20, and is there any kind of analysis that will take place to make sure that those are cared for? Are you keeping them?
When you say the ponds on Route 20.
There's a pond on Route 120. That's part of the.
That's probably the ones in the front.
That's part of the, huh?
It might be part of the.
It's part of the ground, but I think it may be on Greenwich.
Correct, so we got to, I have to look at which one they're referring to, but there are several ponds on the east side of the property that are within the existing golf course that are there, that are all incorporated into the design of the open space. And there's improvements that are being made to those as well. So all of that will be part of that open space landscaping and long-term vision plan for that portion of the property there.
Right, but then again, if you're breaking up the parcels, who's going to be responsible for it?
Hundred percent, that'll be part, again, still part of the overall property. That's why, even though it's subdivided, it's still going to be subject to an overall maintenance plan and permanent open space, et cetera.
So you lose because there was so much rain yesterday. Sitting around. No, I think I'm good. Thank you very much.
Good.
I think that's.
Any other comments?
I hope I don't have anything else.
Any other comments from the public? This is a public hearing. All right. You know, I think, my personal feeling is that we've received a number of very good comments from our boards and consultants. We've heard from the county. I guess, Chris or Ralph, is there any, any other commission or anyone we're expecting comments from? I mean, we just got the county today. So is there anyone else we're expecting comments from that we haven't thought of?
Not that I've heard that we're actively looking at it, other than the potential for Greenwich to submit written comments. They would submit written, though, I would imagine, I believe.
And they have until the end of the month, correct?
Yes, yes, they do, and they're aware of the project, so.
For.
They're aware of it, so they know the deadlines, they know when it's supposed to be coming in, so, not that I can think of otherwise.
Okay, okay, well, I would, I would.
Purchase. Here, Purchase.
This has been something that we've been advertising, it's been, you know, it's been more than a month that we've been talking about this deadline. I personally feel comfortable that the scoping document has received comments that will make it, I don't, I don't feel like we're missing anything personally from this. I would, I would feel comfortable closing the public hearing.
We can, can we close it, you know, in a few days or something to give people a chance to comment on what transpired tonight?
Tonight, right.
Well, right now, they, there is still the written submission deadline. That's the 28th.
Through Friday.
Through Friday. But if, the public hearing needs to be in a public format, so it's not like you're leaving it open, you're just leaving open the period for written comments till the end of the week. But public comments are for the hearing, so the public hearing is set for the public meetings.
What is the downside of waiting till the next meeting?
Then it takes longer for us to get the re-envisioned scoping document.
No, not necessarily. Here's, here's the downside. So the plus is the public hearing is closed, you get all the comments by the end of the week, they're going to revise the scoping document, if, and then the board will have to act on it. So there's, if no other comments come in, then that scoping document can be acted on the, at the meeting when it's submitted. The applicant is gearing up to hopefully have it ready for the second meeting in June, is what I heard.
That's what I heard.
However, if it takes them an extra week or two, that means the public hearing would still have to be held on the 25th, you need to move it to a date certain. So if you say you set it for the second meeting in June, you'd still have to continue the hearing, you could adjourn it, but it would have to be listed on the agenda, so people might come out and, or want to comment on it. So just be aware of that. And any comment that gets submitted that the board wants to incorporate would require revision, and that's where you could get an additional timeframe if the scoping document needs to be revised for the board to incorporate it. So that's the risks, those are the risks back and forth.
Well, I think there's a whole planning approval process that's going to take place in the future, so I think maybe we should just move forward and close it.
All right.
I mean, there's going to be so much, so many other decisions to be made. This is a.
And again, this is making sure, again, this is just making sure that we feel comfortable as the board, given, given the comments that we received, comments we've made tonight, that the scoping document properly outlines what we think should be in the EIS as this moves forward. And I have to, you know, having heard from planning board, having heard from our consultants, I personally feel comfortable with that.
And from, and from the county planning board?
Please, yep, please come up.
I actually would propose an extended public hearing in that I think that this televised meeting is important for others to comment, but I also would like to ask in terms of how this incorporates with our Rybrook master plan.
And that's actually in the, that's in some of the comments that we received and in the scoping document itself, seeing how this, how this jives with it.
Great, okay. If there's any way to extend it so that we can include more of the public, I think that that would be, if there's an opportunity at a later point for the public to weigh in.
Well, there will be many opportunities, there will be many, many opportunities in the future for the public to comment on the merits of the proposal itself, that this will go before, this will be back before village board as an EIS, it'll be in front of planning board, it'll be in front of ARB, it's going to be in, and, and these are not going to be one meetings and done on most of these. There will be extensive opportunities for the public to comment on this, and as we've done in the past, all of the public comments that we receive will end up on the website dedicated to this project, that we're, we are very open about everything, that the comments that have been received to date are there. I'd be willing to bet, even though I didn't look today, but I'm sure the county comment is already on the website there.
I have to ask.
I mean, even though we did. I mean, even though we did just receive it this afternoon.
I have to verify, I'd say it's a 60-40 chance.
Yeah, it wouldn't surprise me if it were, but I think this still
It is, thank you, it is.
See? We're very good about putting all those up so everyone can see them, and then, but also, just, you know, and, and again, this is, closing the public hearing is just meaning that people aren't going to have another opportunity to comment in a forum like this. It doesn't mean that they don't have, that they don't have the opportunity to comment still on the scoping document, because written comment will still be accepted through Friday.
And ultimately, the quicker you get to do the studies, the more healthier discussions you can have about the application.
About the merit of the application itself.
Right, we brought up a lot of issues tonight where
Yes, and thank you very much.
they're going to have to really expound on so much.
Yes, thanks for your tough questions.
Oh, you're welcome. That's what we're here for.
Yeah, and I would say, as, as also one of two people sitting up here who grew up in Rybrook and lives here again, I certainly try and keep my eye on the, the quality and character of the community, and what projects like this, what effect they have on the community, both positive and negative. All right.
Okay, move forward.
All right, can I have a motion in a second, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. I will say yes, but if anybody has any comments, you have three days, get it in.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. So, I think you have your marching orders now.
Marching orders, quite a homework assignment. Thank you all, this is really informative and helpful. Thank you, good night, look forward to advancing the application, see you in June.
Thank you. Do you have the numbers?
Thank you.
Only because you said you were going to do it.
I do.
Thanks. Approximate, of course, approximate is fine, I won't hold you
Residential, 250,000 square feet, plus minus. Non-residential, which is the lodge, the hotel rooms, the office building, all the stuff, 400,000. So, it's about 650,000 square feet altogether. That was in the document that was
And we have no idea what the previous
I don't know off the top of my head, but we will get that information and we will get it to you for sure.
That would be awesome, thank you so much.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to everyone for coming out.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Resolution number two, considering an agreement between A A R P and the Village of Rybrook for a grant award for a community garden at the A J P Community Center. I'm not going to say
I like that, I like that a lot. I think we should officially change that.
Well, since, we went back and forth on that name, even on the resolution, because it is an A A R P grant, so we thought, okay. I think it qualifies because of the senior center.
Maybe we should, all right, fine.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has been awarded a grant in the amount of 4,007, 4,0975, to build a community garden at the Anthony J Pacilla Senior Center, and whereas A A R P has requested the Village of Rybrook sign an agreement detailing the stipulations to receive the grant funds, and whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to enter into agreement with A A R P to receive the grant funds, now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the agreement with A A R P for grant funds in the amount of 4,0975 to build a community garden at the A J P Community Center, be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
We certainly appreciate the funds being received, I think this is a great addition.
This is something that Liz Roethfeld has been looking to do for a long while, and she's had this idea for this community garden, so we were very pleased to get this grant award, and it'll be in the patio area in the back, that, that is, you know, that's where they're looking to put a community garden, in the patio area in the back. If you think about the large meeting, the large room, it's in the area opposite the driveway.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
No.
All right, Chris?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, did you even
Yeah, Greg, love.
Trustee Epstein?
I asked him for something, sorry.
That's right, Trustee Epstein, Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution, can you tell I'm going to start to try and move this along now? I mean, it's, it's, by the way, it's first intermission in the Rangers game, I won't say a score in case anyone
Don't tell me, don't tell me.
All right, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say whether there is or isn't a score.
Free time.
So, anyway, resolution, resolution number three, considering fiscal year 23-24 budget transfers.
Okay, uh, now therefore be resolved that following, the following 2023-24 year-end budget transfers are hereby approved. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read each one, but it's available online. We did increase to 1,000, the one that was highlighted, in the original agenda, it was, I forget, like 600, it didn't change, the, but we needed something for the end of the year. Let's see, other one, and be it further resolved that the following transfers between capital projects be approved in 2023-24, and that's from the Santerre Sewer Relining Manhole Rehab to the A J P Walkway and Boiler Capital Project in the amount of $47,000.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
No.
I think we're very used to these at this
Yeah.
All right. Chris?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's my fault.
Not used to
Trustee, Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. I forgot the number. Resolution number four, considering removal of fixed assets from the village annual financial reporting for fiscal year 23-24.
Okay, whereas the Village of Rybrook fixed asset schedule includes many capital assets for which the village records annually, and whereas the, during an internal audit of the machinery and equipment assets by each department manager, it's been determined that specific assets are no longer available to the village, now therefore be resolved that the fixed assets below are removed from the Village of Rybrook fixed asset schedule and be reported as removed in fiscal year 2023-24 financial audit report.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Are these things we already have gotten rid of?
Yeah, a lot of times we've already removed or disposed of, yeah, if it's an asset, we've, we've, the board's taken action, but we're still listed on a fixed asset schedule that appears in our audit. So, again, it's all part about a clean audit, means you need to get rid of, you need to list the items that are no longer on the fixed asset schedule that should be, a portion does have an value.
And were we potentially paying for coverage for these?
No, no, it's, it's an audit, it's just showing what your fixed assets are
Okay.
and the values of those fixed assets.
Okay.
Shape or get
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
This isn't for an insurance issue, it's
That's, I just wanted to make, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, I just wanted to Any other questions or comments on that?
No, no.
Okay, should I take all the
I have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five
Those are all year-end stuff to get
Right.
prior to the auditors coming in.
Considering a renewal of an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Millennium Strategies for grant consulting services.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a renewal of an agreement with Millennium Strategies on June 27, 2023, and whereas the current agreement expires on May 31, 2024, and whereas in May 24, 2024, Millennium Strategies made a proposal to renew an agreement to continue providing grant consulting services, and whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to renew an agreement with them, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Rybrook to sign an agreement with Millennium Strategies subject to any modifications by, made by council, in the amount of 3,000 per month or 36,000 per year, to assist the village in securing grants starting June 1, 2024 through May 31, 2025, and be it further resolved the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
This has been a great use of expenditures
Mm-hmm.
from the village. I don't think they've quite totaled what Michael has in getting us better prices at things. But they're getting there quickly.
Big and small, you know, we've got several million in the hopper, we've already received, they've already brought in over 1.2 million, I know, and again, everything from small, like the community garden, to large sewer improvement projects, so
Right, yes.
It's, things are really starting to flow now.
Absolutely.
It is, and thank you so much, because I know that for a while it was not flowing, and now it's
Took a little while to
Keep it going, I'm very, very happy for you.
We told them they had to raise their batting average for a while.
Yeah, and they've been doing great, and
And they've been doing great, they're really
We're very happy
We keep getting positive results.
Yeah, and we're very happy to, to have them
Working on our
As a partner, well, it's not really a partnership if we're
As our consultant.
As a consultant, we're very happy to have them.
And Ralph pointed out, the date of their letter is May 21st, not the 24th, we'll correct that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ralph.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right, back to Greg.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number six, considering renewing an agreement with the Carver Center for pool services and the use of Garibaldi Park.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook Recreation Department seeks to renew an agreement for certain pool and related facilities at the Carver Center to support the Rybrook Day Camp, and whereas the village has use of Carver Pool and related facilities for several dates in July and August between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m., and also other use of the pool for open swim between 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. on other dates in July and August, and whereas in exchange for the use of the Carver Center pool and related facilities at no cost to the village except for the cost for three lifeguards and one water safety instructor at $100 an hour for a total cost of $4,400 for the Carver Center. The Carver Center has use of Garibaldi Park for six weeks over the summer, from Monday through Friday, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. to hold the sports camp, and whereas both parties wish to renew this agreement, now therefore be resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate for the execution of said use agreement to permit use of the Carver Center pool for the day camp, and to allow for Garibaldi Park for six weeks in the mornings for the use of the Carver Center sports camp.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
This has been a mutually beneficial agreement we've had for many years, we're going to be continuing this, and thank the Carver Center
Giving us access to their pool.
And giving us access to the pool, and, and, you know, we thank, and I'm sure they thank the village for
They do.
use of Garibaldi, and
It's a nice relationship.
Again, it's, yeah, really good one that we've, that we've had, and my kids have attended the camp and have benefited from this, so it's, it's, and I know many other kids will be now, and it's great that we're able to provide that for the camp.
What, what, what time does our camp close?
The end of the day, Bean?
Yeah, the, the end of the day.
I don't know, I don't know, 3:00 or 3:30, I imagine, but I don't really know.
Okay.
I'm not, couldn't swear that for sure. Is there a concern you want me to ask, or?
No, it's just that they're letting us have open swim from the hours of 1:00 to 3:00, so that's why I wanted that.
Well, transportation to get back, it's probably 4:00, I bet your camp ends at 4:00.
Might be 4:00.
Yeah.
Honestly, don't know.
Yeah, I think it does.
You'd think I'd remember.
Greg, you don't remember your camp days?
It was probably 4:00.
Because nothing's changed since.
I think it's 4:00.
Yeah.
You were a camp counselor at one point, right?
Camp director.
Camp director, oh!
Wow.
The senior rec.
There you go.
Boy, all around Rybrook.
That's right.
And EMS.
Pretty amazing.
And you worked, and you volunteered.
This is my only employee, but
That's pretty crazy.
It's amazing.
Madam, many hats.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Voting, do we vote now, we're done?
We have not yet. Any other questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering approving the use of village streets for belfare events.
Whereas the Belfair Homos Association wishes to hold a music concert on July 27 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the concrete meeting deck of the meeting house at 24 Belfair Boulevard, and a food truck event on September 21 from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. in the village green circle, and whereas the Belfair HOA wishes to close Belfair Boulevard at both ends for music concert and the food truck event, and whereas the road closure of Belfair Boulevard requires the approval of the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees, now therefore be resolved that subject to the final approval of the police department, the Belfair HOA is permitted to use Belfor, Belfair Boulevard for the music concert on July 27 from 5:00 to 7:00 with a rain date of July 28 on the concrete meeting deck of the meeting house on 24 Belfair Boulevard, and a food truck event on September 21 with a rain date of the 22 on the village green circle, and be it further resolved the village streets shall be used in compliance with the terms and conditions established by the police department, be it further resolved that the Belfair HOA shall also obtain food truck permits from the administrator clerk's office for the food truck event.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Couple of questions on this, this one, I was a little confused, so, just to be clear, and I guess maybe this is a question more for Greg, but it's, so, emergency vehicles will have access?
Yes, they have to, so that's why it's in consideration of the, any concerns or issues raised by the police department, so what they do is they got to make sure that, they can't park, like, any food trucks or anything blocking the street
Blocking roads, right.
so people can't get access in there, but, so they're going to make sure, they need to make sure that there will be access for the public, for the various emergency services.
Is this the first time they're doing it, or they're doing it?
We've never got this request before.
That's kind of nice, to have a little thing up there. Is it open to the public, or just to the people up there?
Probably Belfair residential.
I'm assuming it's HOA, which also made me wonder if it's a private event.
It's because they're using pub, the streets?
No, I know they're using the public streets, and that's why we're approving it, but do the food trucks necessarily need the permits?
They do.
If
It's still in Rybrook.
It's still in Rybrook, okay.
They still need permits.
And we have, the board established a very nominal food truck permit fee for either one or up to think, or one-day events or weekend events, so it's a very nominal fee, it's like $25 or something.
Right, okay.
Are we having police stay there as well?
If the, if the police determine that they're needed, then they would have somebody up there. That, they have to meet with the, once it's approved by the board, the police will reach out to them, right, Greg, and they'll see what's necessary to, to be able to staff and provide access to the event.
I mean, if this is going to be issues with traffic and parking, and make the roads
And make the roads remain open, and they should hire the police officers, but otherwise, you know, causing mess.
Okay.
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 Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering a payment to the Village of Pelham for training expenses for a police officer resignation reinstatement and a transfer of funds.
Whereas on December second, Angelie, Angelie Alexander began employment as a police officer for the Village of Rybrook. And whereas the police officer Alexander previously worked as a village, as a police officer for the Village of Pelham from January third to her, uh, up in, uh, two thousand twenty-two, until her appointment in Rybrook. And whereas pursuant to general municipal law, a municipality may assert reimbursement of a prorated share of expenses incurred in training a police officer. And whereas on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Village of Pelham, excuse me, sent a demand for reimbursement of the training expenses incurred for police officer Alexander and provided a summary of the expenses incurred. And whereas Pelham and Rybrook have both agreed that Rybrook shall pay the Village of Pelham a total of fifteen thousand dollars pursuant to and in full satisfaction of the general municipal law representing its prorated share of training expenses incurred for police officer Alexander. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Village of Rybrook hereby authorizes the payment of fifteen thousand to the Village of Pelham representing full satisfaction of general municipal law for its prorated share of training expenses incurred for police officer Alexander. And be it further resolved, the following transfer is approved in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And that's from contingency to the police department contractual line.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
I think this is something that we've discussed in the-
Yes.
In the past, and we knew it was coming. Um, I think, uh-
They did come down from their-
Officer Alexander-
Yeah, it came well worth it.
It's well worth the expenditure.
But we, and they did come down from their original request.
Which is great, and we, we thank you and, and others and whoever was involved for, um, negotiating that and getting this through. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Uh, resolution number nine is an add-on uh, resolution. Uh, considering authorizing insurance carriers for the Village of Rybrook.
Whereas after comparing details of the coverages, the village's risk manager, R.J. and Pastado of FOA and Sun, and the village administrator recommend the village board select travelers' insurance for property liability, law enforcement liability, umbrella auto, public officials and crime coverage for a total estimated premium of two eighty-two, six eighty-six. And whereas the village's risk manager and administrator recommend Cowbell National Specialty Insurance Company provides cyber insurance coverage at a total estimated annual premium of three thousand eight forty-five. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes travelers as the village's insurance carrier for property liability, law enforcement liability, uh, umbrella auto, public officials, crime and cyber coverages, and Cowboy, now Cowboy, Cowbell National Specialty Insurance Company for cyber insurance. And now therefore be resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, maybe a little background, please?
Uh, yeah, the renewal is up, uh, it always brings it right down to the wire in terms of the final negotiations and getting the pricing. Um, these are within the budgeted amounts, uh, lo- uh, even the cyber stayed level from last year, which is great, there is an increase in the other side of it. There's a lot less carriers for the public side of it, that's the downside, there's less people, less competition. Um, but travelers has done a nice job for us. Um, but, you know, Zurich currently, let's see, I've got a little summary. Yeah, Zurich, uh, program has withdrawn from the public, um, public entity mark, marketplace, so they're no longer around, we used to have them. Um, we've worked, we may have to, we look at them again as they come back into the public, which we hear they may do. Um, McKee Special Risk, um, uh, they have, they have declined in the past, and we, the rates would have been higher, I'm told. And also, like, groups like National Union advised that their premium would probably be, um, about almost a hundred thousand dollars higher, so, you know, we believe this is a fair rate, um, the coverage is, the policies and the programs are good. And, uh, we recommend the board approve it for June first.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
No.
You gotta shop it around.
Yeah.
Insurance change, quote, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Even this level.
Yeah, Cowbell, we've had, we've had Cowbell in the past, they've been helpful to kind of provide help with, uh, training and policies and, and reviewing claims, so, yeah. They, they've been a good company, we were, we were pleased to see that that didn't go up.
Right, right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, just a couple of quick items, um, in light of the Rangers game, so.
Oh, there's a Rangers game tonight?
Yes, big game.
Uh, Rybrook birthday real quick is Saturday, June fifteenth, and again, that's gonna be at the King Street Ball Field from twelve to four. Uh, new budget year takes effect right around the corner on June first. Uh, in terms of the NRCS buyout program, uh, all contracts have been sent to the fourteen homeowners. Uh, some have just started to come back, uh, assigned. Uh, the next steps is we, we're doing the oil tank review, and there's five properties that potentially have, have oil tanks that need review. Uh, title company, the surveyor, uh, and there's five properties with tenants that are in the different stages of notice uh, that is required to be provided, and then we schedule closing, so we're moving ahead on that. Working with Keenan Bean very closely, and, um, you know, and, uh, the other company's Housing Action Council, uh, is also involved as well in the tenant side of it, so, yeah, it's a very active time, but it's all moving and progressing towards, you know, for those that wanna move earlier, it's moving towards a final result at this point. Uh, some have already bought other homes and are ready to go, they're very happy for the program, and you know, looking to schedule, we get a lot of calls almost daily, you know, looking to schedule closing dates and so forth, so, we're almost there. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, well, it's great that things are progressing and we understand why residents wanted to move along quickly.